Otherwise, I think we might as well sort of get the ball rolling with everything. So my name is Mitchell from Willongong City Libraries. And just before we get started today, I want to acknowledge and pay my respect to the traditional custodians of all the different lands we're meeting on. We're all coming from different places this evening. And recognise particularly as it's Global Climate Change Week and we're talking about the climate, the absolutely vital role that, you know, the traditional custodians of this land have played in looking after it for so long. And really extend my respect to any Aboriginal or Torres Strait Islander people here with us today. So of course, the star of the show this evening is Gordon Nurse. So Gordon is an accredited climate reality leader and a presenter who was trained in August last year. He holds a Bachelor of Science in Climate Science from Macquarie University. And among other things, is currently the Secretary of the New South Wales Chapter of the Australian Meteorological and Oceanographic Society. And volunteers with Marine Rescue New South Wales and Scouts Australia. So he's got the talk for us this evening. Gordon, I'll hand over to you and let you take the reins.
Thank you very much, Mitchell. It's lovely to be here. Okay, now, according to the IPCC report just released in August of 2021, we are in a code red situation where the climate's concerned. And if we fail to act urgently, there will be catastrophic global consequences. We're already nearing a lot of abrupt time climate tipping points. A great example is the fact that the ice sheets are melting much faster than they were even 10 years ago. So COP26 is critical because if we don't get it right with this one, we may not get another chance. We're looking at trying to limit global warming to 1.5 degrees Celsius and trying to get net zero by 2050. And they seem to be the two big things that we're trying to do. And leaders from 196 countries are going, including, it turns out, ours. And these are the Pacific countries that are involved. The forum that I attended recently included people like Frank Barney Marama. He's actually David, Excellency David Kabua, the President of the Marshall Islands, Don Henry, of course, and James Shaw, who's the New Zealand Minister for Climate Change and the Associate Minister for Environment in that country. Now, our equal hottest year on record was last year, as we probably guessed. Equal with 2016. And it's been getting progressively hotter for the last 15 years or so. New Zealand's had its hottest winter on record very recently. It was 1.3 degrees above the long term average and 0.2 degrees higher than the previous record posted last year. Now, for the three months through August, the average temperature was 9.8 degrees Celsius, which is quite high for winter down there. Auckland's dam is down to 30%. And the climate report suggests that the country will suffer rain and floods in the south and drought and fires in the north as a direct result of manmade climate change. This is the Bulla River flooding in New Zealand in July 2021. So what can they expect for the future? Well, extreme weather for a start. Aorau and New Zealand will become a land divided by weather extremes. Rain will batter the west and the south, leading to floods, while higher temperatures will bring drought and fires to the east and the north. And the weather in that scenario is already starting to play out. And this was the hills around Christchurch four years ago. Rising sea levels will also make many coastal communities and infrastructure vulnerable to floods, tsunamis and other natural disasters. The angriest summer was in Australia so far was 2018, 2019. And this slide shows you half a dozen examples of extreme weather in that summer of 2018 and 19. 21 days above 40 degrees in Birkenau. We complained we didn't get two. And in Tasmania, they lost 200,000 hectares of bush. Now, these were the bushfires from last year. By mid-January, the smoke from those wildfires had circled the earth. And we all remember the fires back then. You know, the Gospers Mountain Fire, remember the mega fire in the south that joined up in three. There's currently a very good series on the ABC that's dramatizing that occasion. It was quite frightening. I know two or three people that were down in Biflame and they got caught, couldn't get out. They're okay now, fortunately. The Cyclone Harold in Vanuatu is another example of extreme weather event. The islands of Aspiris, Santun, Malu and Pentecost were blasted by the rain and winds of over 235 kilometres an hour. And on its way through. Cyclone Yasa, not to be confused with Yarsee, which was 10 years ago, went through Fiji at the end of last year. And four lives were lost in that cyclone. That was a category five. And it caused flooding and damage to buildings and loss of crops and schools and houses were destroyed. And this is a flood situation. Highlighting the problem of disaster displacement when there's no resources available due to their destruction by extreme weather events. Now, the oceans produce over half of our oxygen. They cover 3/4 of our Earth's surface. And open oceans cite so that the current levels of acidity have increased by 26% since the start of the Industrial Revolution. Ocean acidity is when CO2 mixes with the water. And it increases, so it reduces the pH and it makes it very difficult for life forms within the ocean to form skeletons and shells and things out of carbonates. In addition, we've had some of the hottest temperatures recorded in oceans on record. And the oceans, of course, account for things like they provide and they regulate our rainwater, our drinking water, our weather, our climate, our coastlines, 15% of our food production and even the oxygen in the air that we breathe because of their interaction with everything else. Now, here's a school of salmon. And this is to illustrate that 40 to 60% of fish species that we have today are at risk for the rest of the century because of what's going on. And it's having a huge impact on the larger ocean animals. They've declined by nearly half in recent decades. And it's having a huge impact. Let's move that one forward as well. Now, this, of course, is part of the Great Barrier Reef. This is such an important asset for all kinds of reasons. Six and a half billion dollars it contributes to the national economy, mainly in Queensland, of course. But those tourism dollars are at risk. So I'm having a couple of technical problems here. In that same area, the coral reef, the Great Barrier Reef, the science tells us that the sex of the sea turtle is determined by temperature. And because of rising sea temperatures, 99% of all turtles born are now female, which of course means a massive disruption to the reproducibility of this species. I was again watching a documentary on the ABC recently and they were saying that a lot of a lot of the hatcheries are actually disrupted by lack of space through development and so on. So a turtle will come ashore and disturb someone else's hatchery in the process of digging her own, which is also not good for that species. And global heating, of course, makes massive differences to the coral atolls. Fiji Prime Minister Frank Barney Marama at the Pacific Islands Forum says Fiji and the USA's net zero commitments by 2050 must become the entire world's, the Pacific and the planet depend on it. And indeed, Fiji's very existence is now climate, is now threatened as rapid rise in sea levels and saltwater intrusion have made portions of Fiji already uninhabitable. Pacific Island nations contribute 0.23% of greenhouse emissions, yet they seem to take the rap for most of what's going on because they're so low. And a Greenpeace report has been prepared on the state of the climate in the Pacific. It's called T Manu, O T Moana, the Spirit of the Sea. And it is the Pacific's challenge to the world in the face of the climate crisis. And there's a quote from the Hon Mr. Barney Marama. So while our region is particularly vulnerable to climate change, we can still take action to maintain 1.5. That's something that came out of the forum and they're really interested to go net zero by 2050 and maintain 1.5. And they think, they think we can do it globally. So we need to be getting our skates on pretty quickly and moving on with this thing. So. Yeah. Next, here's a list of the overall ratings from the Overall Climate Action Tracker, or CAT. As you can see, one country is meeting the 1.5 degree Paris Agreement. And many countries are not, and Australia's right up there at the top of the list at the far end. The new IPCC report on climate science has reinforced the absolute urgency of closing the 2030 emissions gap. If there's to be any chance of limiting warming to 1.5 degrees, that's pretty much unequivocal. And the CAT rating system is revealing a few lone front runners. That basically takes a few parameters and compares every country against those parameters. Okay, so the time for action is right now. It's not too late. We can still meet the overarching goals of the Paris Agreement if every country puts through forward its own ambitious targets and plans at Glasgow in November. Okay. Okay, now, New Zealand, Fiji, Nauru and the Marshall Islands are committed to net zero by 2050. And all of those were present at the forum. In Australia, though, we're still a bit backwards. Even today, as we speak, the Coalition's Junior Party of the Nationals was continuing to negotiate its terms for agreeing to emissions reductions. So we'll have to see what comes out of that on tonight's news. So there's quite a few people moving to net zero. Among them are the many European nations, the United States. And in the Pacific, Fiji has proposed legislation to support their commitment to that. Still, the rich nations who have benefited from this for several hundred years are the ones that need to lead the way. Okay, here's an interesting thing. This is called the Sun Cable Project. It's a project put up by Atlassian, Mike Cannon-Brooks. And it's basically building a mega solar panel in the North Australian desert and then running a four and a half thousand kilometre cable up to Singapore. Now, if it works, it would be reasonable to run these things off to other cities. And high capacity cables would then be able to move solar and energy all around. New Zealand's already doing this in a different way. It's now got 20% of Australia's population, but it's got 25% more electric vehicles than we have. And here's a photo of a car being charged. My cousin owns a Nissan Leaf in the UK. And he says, the only problem with electric charging is the people that drive fossil fuel cars that park in the base. He doesn't mind it at all. Okay, this is the Blue Water Power Plant in Western Australia. It's rapidly moving towards being a stranded asset, which means we've spent $1.2 billion on it. But its owner's written it off because there's too much competition from renewables. And it just isn't viable, which is an interesting thing. South Australia, of course, has its mega battery, which means it's completely renewable sufficient. And in May 2021, the residents of Marlinga's Outstation in the Northern Territory took their first steps towards repowering the community with low cost clean energy. And they're in a partnership with Original Powers Clean Energy Communities Project. And that project works to allow these communities to build purely renewable energy systems. So they're completely independent. And New Zealand's building infrastructure to boost road maintenance and public transport. It announced a $2 billion investment to kickstart more climate friendly transport in September of this year. Okay, now, New Zealand also. This is a photo that illustrates the issue of food security. New Zealand's had a 2.8% increase in food prices since the end of July of this year. Sorry, in the 12 months to July this year, which compares favorably with 31% on the Global Food Price Index over the same timeframe. This is a direct illustration of the problem of food security. And even before the COVID-19 pandemic, food insecurity was worldwide, was on the rise. Clearly, if you have a high demand, you're going to have high prices and you're going to have high demand if your food is not as available as it needs to be. Now, mangroves all along the Cooks River in Sydney, and I know there are many other places. They planted mangroves over the last 20 or so years. And apart from creating a magnificent natural environment, these are absolute carbon sinks. So they draw CO2 out of the atmosphere, they store it. And when they die, it gets sequestered into the riverbank and into the into the riverbeds. And it's called blue carbon because it's buried and stored underwater. Now, marine permaculture is also important. Things like kelp farms and seaweeds, they're also a massive source of biofuel, feed for cattle and could potentially provide food security for lots and lots of people. And of course, our oceans haven't absorbed over 90% of the heat from global warming to date. This has created a layer of warm water near the surface with that, which acts as a barrier at thermocline of warm water near the surface. And it stops upwelling, which of course is the vehicle by which nutrient rich water comes from the deep ocean. Now, plankton and kelp rely on this upwelling and many fish rely on the plankton as a food source. So as a result of that, we've seen a collapse of 13 out of 17 major fisheries worldwide. Micronesia is running projects to increase water and food system resilience. Water and security and food availability could be critical in areas like this where storm activity and changes in patterns of precipitation can cause changes in availability of food. Particularly so in atolls and remote atoll settings where there isn't much other than the atolls, like rainfall changes or, you know, nutrient patterns change or what have you, then they can easily sort of be disadvantaged by that. Here's a photo of an atoll. This is an example of the Yap Islands. And I'll just let that message go through. But further changes that are due, that are likely to manifest in the coming decades include increased temperature, decreased rainfall, rise in sea levels, ocean acidification, the recurrence of disasters and crises threatens food security through impacts on traditional agriculture. And if you have the choice, that often means forced migrations to higher latitudes. In a case like Yap, you've got an island with some trees on it and there's not any places to go. All right, so in New York in 2019, this is His Excellency David W. Panyewelo, President of the Federated States of Micronesia. He signed on behalf of their government a memorandum of understanding with the Blue Prosperity Coalition to protect 30% of its ocean by 2030. And the leaders of the Federated States of Micronesia, the Marshall Islands, Palau, Guam and the Northern Mariana Islands have also committed to conserve at least 30% of the near shore marine resources and 20% of their terrestrial resources. So that's right across Micronesia by 2020. Now, that's obviously dated. They made that commitment in 2006. I don't have any update on how that went, but I'm assuming it went quite well. Okay, these guys represent Torres Strait Islanders who are bringing a case to the UN Human Rights Committee against Australian governments in action on climate change. They're claiming that because of this, they are denied their rights to culture, the right to a family and the rights of life because the natural resources they depend on are being impoverished and impinged by climate change. And in the Federal Court of Australia, they found that the Environment Minister Susan Lay, this is two of the nine people that brought this action. The injunction was brought against, to prevent Lay approving a proposal by Whitehaven Coal to expand the Vicarate Coal Mine in New South Wales, arguing that the minister had a common law duty to protect younger people against future harm from climate change. That decision was upheld. But he did not grant the injunction as he wasn't satisfied the minister would breach her duty of care. Okay, Katja O'Donnell made a claim against the government on trial for misconduct for failing to address climate change. She was a 50 year law student at La Trobe and she was claiming that the government has breached legal duty and deceiving investors by not informing them upfront of the climate risks they face. Yes, so for example, bushfires cost well over $100 billion in that one event. And this is the sort of thing that Katja O'Donnell is putting up in her claim. Just have to go back. And of course, for the first time, a river, the Fonganui in this case, has been granted the status as a legal entity, which means that it can be protected from, well, exploitation. Previously, we've allowed our natural resources to be exploited. Now, the Fonganui River, among others, is one of those that's now protected. There's other animals like a chimpanzee in Argentina and the robot Sophia, the Costa Rican bees, plants and trees all like here in the United States. All right, now, carbon border adjustments are an interesting one. They're a way of, for countries that are less able to sort of inflict direct economic consequences to vigorously encourage countries like Australia to do better by imposing taxes based on the idea that they're not doing enough with their, with their climate change regime to reduce the, to address the climate crisis. So essentially, they get charged a fee on goods and services to encourage them to do something about it. Okay. Right, and in there was also a recent paper called Missing in Action Responding to Australia's Climate and Security Failure, which was written by a nonpartisan network of former defence and security leaders, including some of Australia's most senior former personnel. And essentially, they're saying Australia's not doing anything. It's not, it's not involved in climate mitigation or anything. It's just not happening. And what is needed, of course, is a whole of nation approach to this risk assessment. So there's a group calling itself RE100, which is the Renewable Energy 100%. It's got 300 plus members worldwide. It generates about 330 plus terawatt hours per year. And it's led by the Climate Group. And they're involved in things like manufacturing pharmaceuticals, fashion and technology. And together, they're sending a powerful signal to markets and governments about the demand for renewable energy. And they're already driving enough renewable electricity demand to power a medium sized country. So Australia could very well be leading the world in generating and selling renewable energy, but instead it's fast tracking coal and gas with public money to the degree of $10 billion or just under $20,000 per minute. Schoolchildren are now calling on adults to join them in sending a message to the government. Now is the time to fund a future that works for all of us. And the more of us that take action, the stronger that pressure on government. Tourism accounts for 8% of the world's carbon emissions, but less than 3% of the economy in Australia. It is significantly unprepared to manage climate risks. And it is also one of the most vulnerable industries, as we've seen with the Great Barrier Reef. But Great Barrier Reef has sections where it's dying, the tourists don't go there. And of course, we have the Pacific. The Pacific Island nations are fighting back. The Pacific Climate Warriors, which is a network of young Pacific Islanders campaigning on the front lines of climate change, have been strengthening their ties with the large diaspora community of Pacific Islanders in Australia. While their sea levels rise in the Pacific, huge droughts devastate and wildfires burn through Australia. On a regular basis, a giant coal mine wants to build right next to where Australia's greatest environmental asset is. Under the motto, we're not drowning, we are fighting, Pacific climate activists are determined to stop it. And policy demands leaders of the Pacific Island Forum. Pacific Islands Climate Action Network has several demands. The Pacific is facing a climate crisis. Climate change demand remains the greatest single threat in the Blue Pacific. There will be just recovery in addressing the dual crises of climate change and COVID-19 and several others. And what they're asking is for the Pacific Island Forum to acknowledge that and make its own demands on other countries. So the Pacific Island Climate Action Network brings together civil society actors across the Pacific Island countries advocating for climate justice. And as part of that, the worldwide network of over 900 non-governmental organisations in more than 100 countries. They're also working to ensure that Pacific Island civil society is represented at the international level. Okay, so climate finance, what needs to happen? Well, climate finance is basically the idea that the $100 billion that was committed gets spent on areas where it's required, like Pacific nations and poorer nations, by larger countries and richer countries. The Copenhagen Accord in 2009 set a target of 100,000, 100 billion US by 2020 by developed countries for developing countries. And in Paris in 2015, that was reinforced. Unfortunately, not all of it has been spent. There are three countries that are reading their commitments and most others are not. And the Race to Zero campaign, which is a UN-backed global campaign, outside government to join the Climate Ambition Alliance, which was launched at the Climate Action Summit by the President of Chile. It involves several leading net zero initiatives, 31 regions, 733 cities and several companies, institutions and investors. And the idea is that we meet zero emissions as soon as possible. There's a sibling to it, the Race to Resilience, which was launched at the 2021 Climate Adaptation Summit. It is also UN backed and its campaign to catalyse a step change in global ambition to climate resilience, putting people and nature first in pursuit of a resilient world where we don't just survive climate shocks and stresses, but that we thrive in spite of them. And I think that's very important. Okay, so here's a handful of individual and climate actions or people representing them. And we would like to encourage people to look at things like switching to renewable power, making all vote count for the climate, join a climate action group and lead change, encourage positive discussions on climate change, grow and compost your food, reuse, recycle and upcycle. All those things that we talk about all the time. Nearly done. Okay, and so what do we need from COP26 in Glasgow? Well, we need to redouble our ambition. We need to say 50% by 2030 and keep 1.5 degrees achievable. That's right, where's my notes on that one? Yes, so, yeah. Okay. The next one is not happening. Yes, there we are. We need to set ambitious targets again. Zero by 2030 and again, keeping 1.5 degrees. Now, I'm not sure they will do this. It really depends on how industry treats it because that's where most of the Putin comes from. But there are some credible calls for even stronger 2030 targets and earlier achievement of net zero than 2050. And climate finance and climate justice was a really big feature of the forum. James Shaw of New Zealand went as far as to say that Paris is fraying around the edges. At the core is climate finance. And regardless of COVID-19, rather than because of it, the world is still struggling to find the net, the national to find the net, the nationally determined contribution commitment to address climate change. So we really need to keep rising, keep, keep increasing that awareness and keep pushing for these changes. And finally, we need to mobilise, we need to talk to our MPs, we need to talk to our influencers, our community leaders and get the message out there that these things really do need to change. And they can change, but everybody needs to do their bit. I can give you a link to the forum, it's actually a video, it's two hours long if you want to, there's some really, really interesting information on it. And finally, I think, yes, just as a, as a summary, the future for the climate crisis and its solutions is yet to be determined for Australia, New Zealand and the Pacific Islands. But together we can drive ambitious climate action to secure a safe and healthy planet for all. And I'd like to finish with a quote from Don Henry, who opened, who made the opening remarks. He said, as we approach COP twenty six, all nations of the world need to hear and act on the voices from the Blue Pacific, which includes us, for urgent and ambitious climate change. So thank you very much for your time and your indulgence, leaders. I know it's gone a little bit over time, but the message is important and I thank you. And if anyone has any questions they'd like to ask me, I'm happy to attempt to answer them. Thank you so much.